Can you hear me? Hi, I'm Michael Pell. I'm just, this is the planning board meeting, right?
Yes, thank you. I was just gonna ask if you could unmute and say what your, say what your name was, because it just says Green Miles.
Yeah, that's the law firm. This is, this is business. But when I have to admit I'm a lawyer, I usually add that my children have grown up to do honest work. Proud graduates of Chutes Berry Elementary School.
Excellent.
So you're, you're the, you're the host?
Yes, I'm the land use clerk. I'm part-time staff for the town. I work for both the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, and the zoning board.
Oh, that's it. If you want to go to law school and become a land lawyer, that's an excellent grounding, or maybe an environmental expert like a wetlands consultant?
Yeah, so my background's in biology. So I also work for the Conservation Commission for the Town of Leverett.
Oh, that's, so you like the, the conservation? Do you know Janice Stone?
Yeah, yeah.
She's probably a good person to learn a lot from. She's been doing it a long time.
Yeah, she's the Hadley Conservation Agent.
Right, right. Which means she, she's been at it long enough to have a good feel for both, for the people, the politics, and the science.
I also call DEP a lot. The Mark Simpson is the circuit rider for Department of Environmental Protection. I, I ask a lot of questions.
Which is, which is good, because there's, there's the paper rules, and then there's how things really work. Yeah, my, my business is that way. There's some deadlines where if you miss them by a minute, you are dead, done, you know? You can get sued for malpractice, and there's other deadlines that just don't mean a thing, and there's no way to tell which is which from the writing. You just have to be there.
Yeah, you just have to learn. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And you've got a, you've got a ringside seat. The last multi-megawatt solar project was, was an eight-month-long battle. I represented the developer, and this time, I'm basically trying to look out for the town. You know, I don't represent anybody, but this one will probably be a huge battle, too.
I did learn here that it was about a year of a, to get through the, the last one, so.
Right.
Complicated.
Well, but the, the thing with this one is what I just sent an email, and I don't think I, I don't know if I included you. Maybe I did. Basically, I said, look, our goal should be, can we get a million dollars a year out of this project between the payment in lieu of taxes, operating fees to operate the project, and what is called contract zoning, which means the town gets paid off to let a project happen, which the courts have said in Massachusetts is perfectly legal.
The pilot, yeah, payment in lieu of taxes, yeah.
Well, that's, that's one thing. That's, that's one source. Then there's the operating fee, because they get an extra two cents a kilowatt hour for town operating the project, and they also move higher up in the Department of Energy Resources priorities. So basically, I think the position I'm taking is, you know, fifty, fifty-five million kilowatt hours a year, two cents a kilowatt hour, I'm sorry, megawatt hours. Each mega, each, and each megawatt hour is a, a thousand kilowatt hours. Basically, that's an extra million dollars a year, and so I think it's reasonable to say the town should get at least several hundred thousand a year out of that, plus the pilot, plus the operating. I mean, it's, it's whatever the traffic will bear. Oh, it looks like more people are coming.
Would Jim mind unmuting so that I would learn the last name for the minutes? If that would be okay?
Sure.
Hi, Michael.
Jim Plaza.
Thank you, Jim.
Hey, I'm, I'm gonna mute now, because I, there's no reason you need to hear from me now. I'm just a spectator. Bye. Tessa, how are you?
I said, oh, hey, I asked, but you couldn't hear me.
Okay, good. Would Sylvia, Si- Sivia, Zivivia, sorry, mind unmuting? Oh, I don't know if they're fully here. So that I could learn their name for the minutes.
Hey, Deacon.
Hey, Michael.
How are you?
I'm good, I'm good. We're, I'm in the, we're in the throes of inoculation.
Oh, what, we're, like, one, two, or?
I'm sorry, one, two?
The first one, the second one?
Oh, no, no. I'm, 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 I'm putting, I'm putting fungus into oak. It takes a lot of time.
That's wild.
Would S I V I V A mind unmuting and giving their name for the minutes? So, Vi- Vivia?
Ziviva?
Yeah, my name is Ziviva.
And your last name, if you don't mind?
Lavanna.
Thank you. Would Zippora unmute and give their last name for the minutes?
Yeah, hi, this is Zippora Hill Debran.
Thank you.
Well, it doesn't look like we have quorum yet.
I think.
No, we do, we do, we do. Oh, they're not showing on my screen. I, I only see myself and Michael.
Steve and Linda are also here.
I'm here, Deacon.
Oh, good.
Uncharacteristically showing up in, in person.
Yeah, you know, go figure. I could do the, I could do the Godlight thing here, you know?
Well.
And Nathan's joining right now.
Oh, good, good. Well, well, maybe, well, why don't I call the meeting to order? I'll read the governor's announcement, and maybe, maybe by that time, we'll have, we'll have everybody here. Okay. Following the governor's restrictions on public meetings, this meeting is being held virtually using zoom.com for remote participation. Public may access it following the instructions on this meeting's agenda posted on the town calendar. If despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access, the public can request a recording of this meeting by contacting. All right. Is there public comment that, for issues that aren't on the agenda, or from people who, who need to leave early? I see Miriam's hand.
Yeah, I have a comment. Should I go?
Please, please.
So I sent the planning board an email about this, and I'm, I'm bringing this as a topic up because it's something that the Historical Commission has brought up in the past with the planning board, but there's some new time sensitivity about it. I've been in communication with one of the field researchers who's doing field surveys of the solar projects for the landowner. And she posed a question to me because they're in the process of consulting with the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer from the Wampanoag Tribe of Gayhead Aquina, and there are unresolved questions about how sensitive archaeological data can best be handled with the special permit applications to ensure that sensitive sites are protected. And my understanding is that the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer, as well as the landowner, share the interest in protecting the, the data. And Historical Commission has already spoken at some meetings in the past about our feeling that a procedure or process needs to be established for all projects to ensure that archaeological sites are protected. So I'm coming to you with a, a request that perhaps we should set up a joint meeting maybe in the near future with the Planning Board and the Historical Commission, and perhaps with Town Council, so we can talk about a process.
So, Deacon, can I ask a follow-up question? Just to understand?
Please.
So, Miriam, I guess I have two questions to clarify. I mean, I'm generally supportive, but, so the first question, it's, the process is, if in any future developments, there's sensitive sacred land structures or anything that has historical relevance is identified, your question is, you know, the Historical Commission will be involved, but if it involves something that the Planning Board is reviewing, the question is, how do we engage with that?
Right, what would you require?
Yeah, and I think the second part, if I remember correctly, is that there's a whole confidentiality component where you're allowed statutorily to keep things confidential. I don't know if we are, but is that part of the process?
Yeah, and, and I may not have a full understanding of it. My understanding is that the Historical Commission, established by state law, we have the authority to maintain private, non-public records of archaeological data. And I believe we have the authority to review that data in non-public settings. I imagine that means an executive session. I don't know that the Planning Board has that authority, so hypothetically, and I'm just posing this as a hypothetical, because I don't speak for really anyone here. But hypothetically, if there are stone groupings on some of these tracks, and the landowner and the developer and the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer want those sites to be protected from development, they could theoretically, you know, present a site plan that doesn't disrupt those, those sites. But in order to verify that they've kind of done their due diligence, there'd probably need to be somebody who would kind of need to, you know, check out those sites, do a home, do a home visit, do a site visit, or consult with the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer to make sure that they've had, you know, their questions answered and that they're satisfied with the process. And the Plan, the Historical Commission could then give a report to the Planning Board on what we, what our findings were, if we're satisfied or not. But I don't know if the Planning Board, in order to review special permit applications, is going to say, we need to know exactly what you're protecting and where it is and what it looks like. I don't know if you need that level specificity or not, and I feel like that, there needs to be some sort of policy established because clearly, the landowner and the researchers and the Tribal Historic Preservation Officers are gonna need to know what's gonna happen with this data.
So I guess, well, thank you for answering that question. I guess I, I would just chime in and say, I think doing something before something gets submitted probably would be better than waiting till something is submitted. You know, if, if Deacon was okay with putting it on our next agenda, I don't know if Historical Commission would be willing to join us, but maybe that's the most expeditious as opposed to finding a separate time.
We're meeting on Wednesday, and, you know, we can talk about that and get back to you if that works out. The Commission agrees. I, I think that it's really important to make these decisions ahead of time, because it's sort of, the, the consultation process is happening right now. The, my understanding is that a Tribal Historic Preservation Officer has already conducted a preliminary site visit, and so it's gonna make it impossible to, for them to move forward without knowing what's gonna happen with the data. They need to know that.
Deacon, we, we put it on the next agenda for whenever?
Yeah, well, that's fine, but one thing I, one thing I was gonna say is that I think our schedule is dependent in considerable part on what we decide about amendment process prior to town meeting, because that's, that's the big determinant of our schedule. And we'll, and that's, and I'm hoping that we're, we're gonna get to that during, during the amendment discussion that's, that's on for tonight.
Cool. Deacon, small favor.
Yes.
Tilt your laptop so I can see more than your eyeballs. There you go. Thank you.
It's not an improvement.
So, so we should, are we in agreement that we'll try to coordinate with you to set up a joint meeting? Is that what I should convey to the Historical Commission?
Yes, yes, we're fine. I mean, I'm certainly fine with that. I mean, I don't see why we wouldn't want to do that.
What about having Donna be involved?
Well, I think that's probably good, too. I mean, we, we rely on her quite a bit. And she has a schedule, too, so.
Okay. So I think.
She's not always available.
I think that to request her presence, that has to come from a chair, so it would have to be, you know, sounds like what would need to happen is, you would decide when you're gonna have a meeting, let us know that.
Yeah, well, right, but I mean, we may, we may be able to get to this, we may be able to get to this in a, in a more complete fashion later tonight.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So, so Tessa, how many planning board members are here now? They don't all show on my screen.
We have, currently have. Yep, all seven.
Oh, super, super. Well, I'm wondering, Michael Pell, maybe we should just move on, maybe we should just change the schedule a, a little bit. And Michael Pell is already here. He may not want to stay for the rest of this. He has been in contact with the board and has presented ideas that we haven't, we haven't been hearing about before, so.
Deacon, actually, clarification question. Are we moving from public comment, or is Michael's comments part of public comment?
Michael's on the agenda.
So maybe you could just see, I see a bunch of people, if there's any other open public comment?
Oh, well, sure.
Suzie Moosher has raised her hand.
Okay, these people, well, she, she should, she's welcome to talk now, yes. I can't, she's, she's just not showing on my screen.
Okay. I just wanted to comment that I sent a letter both to the Select Board and the Planning Board, an email with an attachment. The attachment is the points I raised a year ago. And I don't really know if there will be a public space or a public process to address some of the issues that are involved in this project. It appears to me that if we, if, if the only time the public has a discussion is during the public hearing, it tends to focus on just the bylaw amendment parts. And I wondered if the, the Planning Board has considered another forum that might be moderated, because right now, Nextdoor Chutes Berry and Preserve Chutes Berry are platforms of discussion, but there's not a more open moderated one, and I wondered if the Planning Board was thinking about a public information process.
Organized by the Planning Board?
I, I don't, to me, it's a question of process, and I don't know who would be in charge of starting that process, but did, did you get my email, Deacon, with the attachment?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I was raising, what does that process look like, and how would it get initiated?
I don't have an answer to that at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Jeff.
I, I don't know if this is our wheelhouse at this point to organize this type of, of discussion. The, the applicant is certainly going out with a number of, of meetings that anyone can attend. I, I attended one today at noon, and there's gonna be a number more, I think, five altogether. One representing each one of the proposed sites, and they'll be at noon and seven. I guess, I guess there's one going on right now about the Carver Road project, the same one that happened at noon. So, you know, they're out there doing that and hearing from people. The town administrator and select board seem to be pretty interested in this. You know, maybe it's, maybe it's their, maybe it's their thing to do. You know, we're a regulatory board, and we don't even have, we don't even have projects in front of us yet to look at. And we have our public process that's gonna, that's gonna ensue. So, I, I question whether we should take on anything like this at this point.
Sure. Yeah, I would tend to agree with Jeff. I mean, the Select Board's definitely started a conversation. It's their, you know, their right or ability to sort of facilitate any conversations they want, but, you know, there's nothing in front of us. And I think there's bounds of what we should be discussing as, as a board. You know, when and if we get something in front of us to consider, and there is a public hearing when it, when it shows up.
Anybody else? I mean.
This is Zippora. I guess I have the same question as, what, when, when does the public get to discuss this?
Right, I'll, I'll, Deacon, I'll jump in. I mean, I just want to acknowledge the fact, we got a, a whole bunch of emails to the Board, I don't know, in the last few days. And so number one, personally, I just want to appreciate it. I mean, I think public engagement and sharing everyone's ideas is really important. That said, you know, as Jeff pointed out, we don't have projects in front of us, so you know, while I think the sentiments are good to be sharing, there's, there's no there there yet, and so it's, it, it seems, it's a little premature for the, it is premature for the Planning Board to get involved, because there's nothing there. You know, whether the Select Board should be doing something or not is questionable. I know they raised that at some point. You know, there's environmental issues, financial issues, et cetera. There's a range of things, but I, I mostly just want to acknowledge that we got a lot of emails, and that we're not ignoring that we got them. But the public hearing is sort of the time and place to sort of respond to the specific plans.
That's, Suzie Moosher has raised her hand again. And just as a comment for, to facilitate this, please just unmute yourself and speak if you're from the public and you have something you would like to say, because I'm taking minutes and trying to notice when people raise their hands, but if I miss you, I think you should just unmute yourself, because I am also taking a minute, so thank you.
And I definitely, I, my screen is really showing only a small, a, a small part of the people who are attending. I, I can't see the hands that are raised.
So, so my further comment is that the Planning Board is considering amendment, an amendment this year to last year's bylaw, and there are aspects of last year's bylaw that I believe should also be considered for amendments. But if there's no public discussion, then I, or process, I don't understand how a citizen would be able to communicate their concerns and get some action in terms of amendments that would be put in. Last year, when I raised some questions, that there was work to amend the issue around the access road be, needing to be a paved road. And that was not a discussion, I didn't have that discussion. I put it in the letter, and I, and there was some change. If, if that's the process, then people need to know what comments to send that would help shape this year's amendments that the Planning Board is considering. Otherwise, I guess somebody could put in a, a warrant article that also tries to direct the process. But I feel like a public discussion would cover a lot more people's concerns, and it would share information more accurately.
So Suzie, if I could respond, I mean, because I believe I said this when we had the joint meeting with the Select Board. To be clear, and we're gonna talk about this later in the agenda, the access road amendment is not to the solar bylaw, it's to the zoning bylaw itself. So there, as far as I know, we have not discussed, nor are we planning to make any amendments to the solar bylaw this year.
But you're making amendments to help direct the project or help clarify the project, whether it's to this part or that part, it's to the, to the solar projects. So it's just, how will this, how will people be able to have some, how will you know what people are thinking about, and how will the people have any part of getting information and making some judgments?
Well, I think all the discussion that we're having on, on this is in a public meeting, so people are gonna have access to the minutes. People are gonna have access to the Zoom recordings from the town clerk. They can make a request. If people want to comment, they can come to a public meeting and send a comment, or they could in theory, send a letter to the or they could, in theory, send a letter to the chair and, and request that it be added to the public record during the meeting or at least amended to the minutes so that it would be included, that it was, you know, that they communicated to the board. If I'm correct, any amendment to the zoning bylaw would require a public hearing, which would also provide further opportunity for the public to provide their feedback and to participate in discussion. And furthermore, any, any amendments I propose to the bylaw are going to town meet?
I don't think you, I don't know if you received the email, Nate, that I sent because it covers the problems that that process you just outlined went through last year and, and we're back at that same problem again this year. So, so I don't know what else to do. I sent a letter twice, two years in a row, and I'm not figuring out how we make this a discussion where people can get information and give you feedback.
Well, I would, Suzie, just without getting into further, why don't you just wait until we get to that point in the agenda and then we'll be talking about it specifically?
So I only see, I'm not sure, I looked at the agenda, I didn't see that.
It's right after the minutes, access and associate member amendments, I believe is where we're going to be talking about that. Correct, Deacon?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so that's the zoning amendments part of it. So just plug in there and tell us, tell us what other amendments you're interested in.
Well, let's move, let's move on. I mean, is my, my suggestion.
Can you pull that?
I'm sorry?
Deacon, pull your screen down, we're not looking up in your eyeballs here.
Okay. How's that?
Sort of better.
All right. My suggestion a few minutes ago was, was to see if Mike, Michael Pill wanted to, wanted to go next.
Are you asking me, Deacon?
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever is the Board's pleasure. I, I do want to stay tuned for the whole meeting. So I'll be here whenever you want me, you ever want to, I, I see him on the agenda over driveway length and contract zoning.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm aware of that, yeah.
And, and also I, I sent an email a little while ago representing the town of East Long Meadow. Basically, I got clobbered in the land court today and I wanted you folks to, to know about that because, and I've got another case where I'm representing, in other words, I've got two cases in the land court. One, I represent the town of East Long Meadow and basically I am getting beat up very badly by the judge. I've got another one that I just filed for a solar developer in Barnstable and the land court has accelerated that case. They're holding an administrative called the Case Management Conference and we, and that's a judge named Vey. The judge today was Chief Justice Piper. The guy who clobbered Waltham was Judge Spicer. I mean, there's seven judges now and it seems clear that three of them are basically having it in for local zoning. And whichever side of this one is on, for example, I just saw on the Preserve Shootsberry website, they're saying, support our local bylaw. Well, as I put in my email to the Planning Board, what I'm seeing in the land court and forgive the harsh analogy, that's bringing a knife to a gunfight because if the town tries to do that, the last thing any town wants is to suffer the fate of Waltham where the land court said, your bylaw is illegal, issue a building permit, no conditions, no public hearing, no nothing. Judge Spicer in the Tracer Lane case that I've sent a couple of times, just today, again to the Planning Board and the Select Board. So I, you know, that, that's, I guess, what, what I wanted you to know. And if you wanted to, and that's why I think the contract zoning and the driveway amendment, the driveway amendment I was proposing basically would put that under the control of the Planning Board like all the rest of the solar bylaw is, so that the Planning Board would at least have the authority to waive it. And as far as the contract zoning goes, what I put in the email today is I think between the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes, the whatever fees we can get for administering or operating the project, which can simply be subcontracted out. And finally, the real thing is I think they're going to have 55 million megawatt hours a year and the 2%, 2 cents per kilowatt hour adder means about a million dollars a year for the project. And I think we want to get in for, say, at least half a million to a million upfront. And, you know, why not say to them, look, you get 2 cents, give us one, half a million dollars a year. I think the goal should be that the town seeks to gain a million dollars a year between the pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, the administrative fees and a share of the project revenues. I don't expect AMP to like it, but it becomes a matter of if the odds of stopping it entirely do not appear to be good, what else are you going to do? Don't bring a knife to a gunfight. And what I'm also willing to do, if AMP is sitting there, and I assume they've got somebody listening, saying, well, why should we give you anything? You know, I've been litigating suits, solar cases since 2015. The first case in the land court, I beat up on Joe Kennedy Citizens Energy Corp. on behalf of homeowners in Hatfield. And the winds have changed 180 degrees in that court since we won that case. But I'm willing certainly to offer to support Donna. And what we can say to AMP is the town may lose in the end, but if you want to fight, you know, I, I'll, I'll do whatever I can to support that because I think that AMP needs a good reason. And my assumption is even if they win in the end, they don't want to spend the next three, four, or five years fighting a court battle. And if I'm willing to work for free to support Donna, who is of course the town council, and whether or not to take that offer would be up to the Select Board. I would hope that would give AMP a good incentive, given the fact that of the half dozen or so cases that have gone through the land court on solar, I've been involved in three of them. So is there any, quite, I, I did send emails about both the contract zoning and the amendment. Does, are there questions or discussions or concerns?
Jeff. Michael, there, there are some differences between Waltham and East Long Meadow and Shootsberry. I, I read those, those cases, the, the Waltham case and the, I, I read your brief on East Long Meadow earlier. But it appears that Waltham only has 1.8% of its total area zoned for solar.
Yes.
And, and the judge slammed him for that, 1.8%. East Long Meadow, I believe, has 9.7%.
Which I, which I argued, and what the judge did today, he brushed that aside. And what he said is you cannot, East Long Meadow prohibits solar in a residential zoning district. His position that he made clear in the 2019 ruling that he reaffirmed today when he essentially threw me out of the game, is to say that a town cannot prohibit solar in any zoning district and.
All right, I'm, I'm going to keep that, I'm going to keep talking here, Michael.
Okay, I'll shut up and listen.
All right, so 9.7 in East Long Meadow and, and that excludes the residential area. But Shootsberry has about 80%, 75, 80%, which includes residentially zoned land because the FC is residentially zoned land. So at least in the percentages and, and not making a distinction about having it not be in any residential area, we, we don't, we don't match these other two towns exactly, do we?
No, and that gives, that's, listen, I, I don't volunteer for what I think are sure losers. And I think precisely some of the points you're raising is why I think we are in a position to say to AMP, you want to fight on your hands, we can give you one you'll never forget.
Well, Jeff, may I jump in for a minute?
And also just, Miriam, also, her hand raised.
I just want to jump in because I don't know what you're referring to when you say contract zoning for the rest of us. Could you explain that?
Kind of, Miriam, before you do that, I just want to, you know, like I said before, we don't have anything in front of us. So I think it's way mature to talk about, you know, going to court, not going to court, changing, premature, what is, yeah, premature. So it, it's interesting to hear, but you know, it's all moot until we get something in front of us. So like, if, if someone wants to develop solar in town, the first required step is to actually put something to the Planning Board for a special permit application. And then, you know, then we can have subsequent conversations.
Okay.
Sorry.
Should I explain contract zoning?
Yes, I, I, yeah, please.
Okay. Years ago, in the town of Bellingham, the town, a company called Durand IDC Bellingham came to the town and said, if you change your zoning to allow our project, we will give $8 million to the town. The town changed its zoning and a number of people went off to court and said, you can't do that. And essentially what they said is what's called contract zoning, which means the town in effect trades a zoning amendment for a donation, a voluntary donation to the town. And the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court said, yes, you can. And there are other cases on that. I'm the author of a multi-volume commentary treatise on land law. I've got a short section on it. There is a much longer section in what's called the Mass Zoning Manual by Mass Continuing Legal Education. And Miriam, if you or anybody else, my email is mpill@verizon.net, M-P-I-L-L@verizon.net. Just send a short email saying, please send info on contract zoning and I will forward to you the same email that I sent to town officials and the Planning Board. What that means, so when I talk about trying to get money upfront for the town, which I think ought to be a million dollars anyway, and also trying to tap in to the, the project's revenue, say to the tune of half a million a year, in effect, that's what I'm talking about. Because the, I think the town has at least one zoning amendment going to town meeting and I proposed another one on the driveway length issue, which I think basically, you know, Jeff's exactly correct about where solar is permitted in town, but you can't get there through the residential zones because access to a use is part of the use. So I'm proposing to amend the 1,000-foot driveway limitation. And I think that would also hopefully address the use issue and put that under the control of the Planning Board, saying the Planning Board can waive that. I, I hope I answered Miriam's question and, and I'll shut up now.
So, Michael, if I may, I think one of the next items on the agenda is zoning amendment to fix the access issue from roads out to the FC district for uses allowed in the FC district. So we're going to fix that problem. So do we get our $5 million now or do we have to wait?
I think, I think what we need, well, and I'm reasoning by analogy. I, I think essentially the position for AMP is that is, okay, and, and you're right, maybe it needs to wait until something is before the board. In other words, you can't exact it, you can't force them to do it, which the court is doing legal hair splitting. They're saying that's an exaction, that's, that's not legal necessarily. But if the town, the town can accept a voluntary donation and particularly because they have to have municipal operation in order for this project to go forward, I think we are in a position to say, and we could even do it through the operating, maybe not through contract zoning. I'm trying to think of alternatives. In other words, if you want the town to agree to be the operator of this project, then we not only want to be paid a reasonable fee over and above what the subcontractors who would do the work will cost, we want a million dollars upfront and a half million dollars a year out of the project revenue. And you can call that whatever you want. You can call that an additional administrative fee. What I'm thinking of is what that would mean for a town with a $6.6 million annual budget in terms of capital improvements, lower taxes, you know, it, it would, it would be whatever people would want. And keeping it in the Planning Board, I mean, let's face it, with the Wheellock project, you put us through hell when I represented the developer there. And I would assume you would do the same thing with AMP in terms of addressing as many of the public concerns as possible with very tough conditions.
Right, so I guess I would just jump in and I guess two, two thoughts. One is, Michael, I think part of your argument is you're in front of the wrong board because the Planning Board can't make contracts for the town, only the Select Board can. And when we had that joint meeting with the Select Board about what was memorandum of understanding, that was the exact point that, you know, what you referenced just now was if any development came under operational control of the town, it would become a public entity under the smart regulations. And in order to do that, the town has to have a contract with the developer and that's only the Select Board who could do those contracting. So if there was a grand bargain that were to happen, I think there'd be multiple players, but the Planning Board couldn't sign off any contract representing the town. We don't do that, the Select Board does. I guess just, and, and given that, I guess in the interest of the discussion, it would be great, since you referenced the driveway, just to sort of keep the discussion on the driveway. Because we can't really speak to contracts on behalf of the town with, with the developer. It's not our purview.
And, and all the emails I've sent have gone to the Select Board too. And I, I thank you for that clarification. I may be a land expert, a land law expert, but municipal law, I would bow down before Donna and also you folks who actually do it. So, thank you.
Sure.
On my screen, I don't see anybody with a hand up at this point. Or, or do you, Jeff?
No, no, I'm just being the thinker here.
Okay.
Well, I, no, let me ask Michael a question. Just in, in, in the Bellingham, was, was the developer dealing with the, the chief executive officer or dealing with the Planning Board in its, in, in what it did?
My recollection is it was a zoning change that went to the town meeting, which probably meant the Planning Board would have had to make a recommendation on the zoning change. And I assume the Select Board might well have been involved in putting a warrant on the town meeting. But keeping in mind what you said, Jeff, and you're certainly right about every case has different facts and what Michael said about, which frankly I hadn't realized, thought, I hadn't thought it through, that if you're talking about municipal operation, that that would be the Select Board, then it sounds like we're not maybe talking about contract zoning, meaning getting money in return for a zoning bylaw amendment. We're talking about what is the compensation the town's going to get in return for accepting operational responsibility for the, for the, the, the project.
And just to fill out the terminology, yeah, so at the, later on in the meeting, I guess I'm going to report about the DOER meeting, but what DOER says is there's, it's an operations and maintenance contract. That's the, that's a term of art that they're looking for and that's where that would, that would all get written up between the Select Board. That's the that's a term of art that they're looking for. And that's where that would that would all get written up between the select board and the developer.
And what I like about that, Michael, is, you know, certainly, I don't know, you know, certainly with with the contract zoning, you have to keep in mind the distinction between exaction being seen as trying to force a developer to do something in return for a zoning change or possibly a permit, as opposed to a contract, which is purely voluntary on the on the part of the town. I I guess what strikes me is I don't see any reason that the town cannot say, this is what we want. In other words, you know, give us money that would lower taxes, provide capital improvements, in effect, change the town's finances dramatically. Oh, and by the way, for those who are concerned about us not getting anything, one one thing I think we absolutely have to push for is, and I from seven years in the hydroelectric business years ago, it is technically possible, and it shouldn't be that expensive. Wire these things so that if the transmission line to the substation on Pratt Corner Road goes down, Chutes Berry will have electric power from these sites. That will make us in effect a survival town. I think it will do wonders for everybody's real estate values. And it means that hopefully the times when we've been without power would be minimized. I mean, if trees come down on the power lines, there's still an issue. But if anybody remembers the 2008 ice storm, that was the transmission line all the way to Worcester that went down. If we had had something like this then, and it had been wired, which I again, AMP's not going to be eager to do it because it costs some money. If it had been wired, so when the transmission line went down, Chutes Berry had power from its own solar projects. Our lives would have been a lot easier and going into a future where we have no idea how bad things are going to get economically, socially, politically. I think that's an important benefit to the town that certainly should be made a condition of any agreement. You call it's called maintenance and operations?
Operations and maintenance, yes.
Operation, okay.
And and just to answer your final point, and then I do think we should move on, but it is, I can I can send you information, but it is very complicated. The thing that, and you might know this because you're involved in it, but the key is becoming a public entity in the eyes of the smart regulations. And if you become a public entity, you become category one, which is the preferred category.
Exactly, exactly.
Right. And so it's a benefit to them. The thing is that smart regulations were designed to protect priority land and environmentally sensitive land, which is aligns with what the Chutes Berry bylaws trying to do as well. And if we were to go into this contract, they would get the ability to become category one while building. It also doesn't exempt anybody from permitting. So DOER made very clear that you can, if you become a public entity, you get to go to the front of the line, you get to get a higher, you know, reimbursement in terms of the incentives. You don't have to get the permitting before you get the the incentive, but you still have to go through the permitting. And my understanding is the sites that they're looking at all would not qualify for smart funding, except for the public entity. So it's a highly complicated thing. But again, it's 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 a select board purview. It's not ours. So I don't think we should get into, you know, it's it's a it's more political than regulatory, I think.
Please do send the information and 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 thank you for the information. But what that says is, we have a lot of bargaining leverage, not only for money for the town, but also for planning board conditions that they might not want to live with, but which they would rather be able to proceed with than 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 fight. I mean, when when I said, you know, years ago, when I was on the side of the Wheellock project, the planning board put us through hell, they did that. And I can definitely say those conditions were considered horrific and onerous. But in the end, you know, the economic decision was, all right, we can live with it. Let's do it. Let's not fight. And I I would like to think AMP would be in the same position. And that would enable hopefully the planning board, when the permitting arrives, to address as many as possible of of folks' environmental concerns or concerns about historic sites or or landscapes that need to be protected. Okay, is it time for me to shut up and go mute and listen now?
Well.
Okay.
I think this is a good start. And given that you plan to stay for the whole meeting, maybe we'll get back to you.
Whatever whatever you like, I mean, I I think I think this is an opportunity for the town and hopefully to meet as many of the public concerns as possible. Okay, if you want anything more from me, just ask. I'm gonna shut up now, though, and listen.
Okay, well, let's let's move on to the minutes.
So Chair, this is Tessa, the land use clerk. We do have an update, and Michael's aware of this because of a community email communications with Linda, the previous land use clerk. So we got clarification from her that the minutes that are joint with the select board cannot be, I do not need to be approved by the planning board. They're approved at select board meetings and are not editable. The feedback is from Linda is that they're not editable by the planning board.
And and we don't need to approve.
Correct. That is the feedback I got.
Good.
So it's just the it's not, yeah, so it's not the minute because that that the difference would be is if someone from the planning board or myself was at that meeting also taking minutes. But in the case of the fact that it was just Linda taking the minutes mostly for the select board, but including what happened with the planning board, those minutes are to be approved by the select board only. So that was the.
So does that include the historical commission too? Because we also were having joint meeting that night.
I would double check with Linda, but I would that would likely be true.
Okay.
Yeah, but I you could check with Linda on that.
Well.
So that would leave just the March 8th minutes for review.
Great, thank you very much. Let's move on to the the March 8 minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of March 8, 2021.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so let's move on to a discussion of the minutes. I I know Michael had some proposed edits.
Yeah, let me test it. Why didn't we share my screen? So I will do that.
Thank you.
So Tessa, you you've got this file, so I don't have to go slow for you. The first one was just under public comment. It said commission members, and I'm assuming it was conservation, but I think we should just sort of clarify what commission. And then the next down here, it said that I gave an update on the sixth agenda item. I'm not quite sure what that is, but it better to just say what it is. I don't know what it was referring to as the sixth agenda. If that was the thing that was later in the later on in this minutes.
Yeah, it was the, I believe it was one of the solar, the solar discussion later on.
Okay, yeah, if you if you just want to fill it in, it's like with a couple of words.
Well, can I comment a bit?
Sure.
My recollection is that it was a planning board members explained that the planning board has not received any applications.
Yeah, I would agree with that, Deacon. That's my memory.
Oh, you mean for instead of the conservation?
Yes, it was a planning board who made that clarification.
Great. Should I cruise through a little bit?
Were you changing that, Tessa, on the screen?
No, this is just, this is my document. She's doing it on her own. Right, Tessa, you're making the real changes?
You'll have, I was hoping that you could email.
Oh, okay.
Notes, but if you could email me what.
Okay, got it. Okay, I can do that. So I'm going to leave this part to you, if that's okay, the sixth agenda item. Or we can come back to it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. There's just this typo here, just needed the ED, and that was just a typo there. So those are sort of small things. This gets to what I was just telling Michael. So the MOU falls under the purview of the select board. So I just added the under the under the purview to make it a little clearer. It seemed a little informal, say falls under the select board. And then this is some of the discussion we were just reviewing. I just changed some words. So if you're a public entity, it's not that it's a different category. It's actually more important to say it's a preferred category, which is category one. And then this was a type, just a typo, it should be higher, the direction as opposed to the verb. And you can just read this stuff, but I basically just sort of wrote it out a little bit more. So it's more explanatory. And then in the farther down this paragraph right here, I didn't want to assume that the planning board would be amending the bylaws, but that we might want to write a definition for municipal partnership. That's what was sort of discussed by AMP, proposed by AMP. So it just made it more conditional. And then I just clarified here. We said that we talked to town council for two hours, and I just wanted to clarify, I was during the development of the amendment in 2020. I think that's it. Yep, I'm just saying the select board just will reach out. So that's the entirety of my. I can keep this up if it'd be helpful if anyone else has any comments, but. Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing.
Thank you, Michael.
Yep, I'll send it to you.
Okay, any more discussion on this? So so we have a we have a motion before us I mean, do we need to modify this so that as to to approve the amendment, to approve the minutes as amended tonight?
Yeah, that's that's sufficient. Just to say it that way, Deacon, we'd be fine.
Okay, so are so are we ready? So are we ready to vote? Okay, I'll I'll call the roll. Michael?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Steve? I'm not hearing Steve.
He's not at his chair.
Okay, Nathan?
Hi.
I'm an I.
There he is.
Are you are you an I on on the minutes as amended?
Yes, yes, I am.
And did I get Robert?
Yes, you did.
Yep.
Okay, and I'm an I. Okay. Good. Let's move on to let's move on to amendments. Jeff, do you want to talk about the access amendment?
Is is Michael wanting to talk about the alternate member amendment first?
No, there's nothing of substance, really. It's more just process of, you know, the update is a select board sought. They don't really do anything with it, but they said, you know, they were sending it back to us for the hearing. So they got it. They received it. They accepted it.
Yeah, 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 that, okay, good.
Okay.
I mean, I think that one's all set, except for.
I'll give you a minute for a minute. Okay. So yeah, between meetings, it has occurred to, it occurred to me that the impression that you cannot access uses in the FC district across other districts such as the RR, TC and LW, where those FC uses might be prohibited because the access is the use. What they was brought to our attention, and it was never our intent, of course, to wall off the FC district to access from town roads. But since this is a concern and it's possibly a serious concern, we felt we needed an amendment to to address it. So I worked a little bit with with Michael, called him in, and I worked a little bit with Donna between meetings. And let me share the screen, and I'll show you what we came up with. And Donna just approved this today. So where is it? I think that might be it. Let's see. There we go. Everybody see it?
Yep.
So this is in article form. Went around and around as to where to put it. Should it be a footnote? Should it be in the in the purposes of of the use districts? No, no. But we found a good place in Article 3 zoning districts use regulations, right after the existing 3.5, add section 3.6 access to use, which says, access including for a pertinent drainage facilities and utilities from public ways across other districts to the FC district for an allowable use in the FC district shall be permitted under the same terms as the use and as a single unified permit application. So this just says, if you need a if you need a special permit for, say, a solar farm back in the FC district, and you're going across the RR where it is not permitted, just for the purposes of access, that can be combined into the permit regime for the solar project in the FC. And it will be permitted on on those same terms and as a part of that same overall permit. So I think we've got that problem in hand with this amendment.
Jeff, can I add an important point?
Sure.
So the reason it's in section 3.6 access to use is because its home is in the zoning bylaw. So it's generally speaking, for any use that would be applicable in zoning. So it could be for a wireless tower, for example, or, you know, any allowable use that would be in the FC if you couldn't get to it. So it's, I think, real important to say this, we're not changing the solar bylaw or changing the zoning bylaws because it could be applicable to anything.
Yeah, it wasn't felt that it was needed anywhere else because our other districts all have all have direct access to roadways. But the FC by definition has no access to roadway. So that's why we needed it just for the FC. So this will take away a an unintended impediment to accessing the FC that we don't want to end up having to defend because it was never our intention to do that. And it's a losing case anyway. So so we thought we'd just get rid of that, get rid of that impediment right now. So it wouldn't be an attractive target for an appeal on its face. So there we go. And I what the planning board needs to do is is vote to either amend or approve this as it is and get it over to the select board. So that's the process. We have to get it to the select board, and then they will they will refer it back to us for a hearing.
Chair, there is a public comment from Don Wachaluk request.
Hi, my question is for Jeff and for Michael. I so I like this language. It looks good. I'm glad that it addresses this issue about access to the forest conservation district. I don't see any mention of the waiver function that we included in our bylaws. Is is that irrelevant? Is, is that irrelevant? Jeff?
This is not part of the solar bylaw. This is in, in the general section. So the waiver wouldn't apply.
That, so I'm talking about the waiver function that was written into all the bylaws.
No, we don't have a general waiver for all of our bylaws. We have a zoning variance section which covers most aspects of the zoning. But there are a few sections which have their own internal waivers. Article five, the open space design has one. Solar has one.
Marijuana.
Marijuana, yep. We've been adding them of, of late, but dimensionally, the general dimensions and, and, and aspects of zoning throughout can only be amended or changed through a zoning variance.
Thank you.
I, I did just get an email from Donna today who looked at this after looking at a number of earlier versions and she agrees it's a good home for it and, and the wording will take care of the problem.
Deacon, I'll make a motion if you're ready for it. I can't see everybody. So.
I'm ready. We can talk some more. We can have more discussion after your motion.
Okay. I'll move that the planning board approve the, what's, it's the access to use amendment and send it to the select board for review.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second. Steve.
Steve? Does anybody want to comment on this any further?
It looks like a good amendment to me. It's short and sweet, to the point.
Yeah, it does what it's, yeah, that's, that's the idea. Okay, so not hearing anything, I'll call the roll. Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Linda?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
I'm an I. Did I miss anybody?
Nathan.
Nathan, I'm sorry, Nathan. Yeah. So, okay. I can't see, I can't see people.
So.
Do the motion, has their hand up?
Um.
Please.
So that, sounds like that one's done. It, it appears to me that the issue around the driveway length also, the current zoning doesn't take into account that something from Forest, from FC category might have to have a longer driveway. And unless that's discussed and amended, it seems to prevent inherently a project like this. Because I think I heard Jeff say at the last one, that's not something that they often give variances for at all. And I don't know the process. I think zoning, ZBA might be in charge of that. So addressing the, the length of the driveway seems to need to be an amendment in the same form as this last one.
Jeff, do you want to speak to that?
No, because we're, we're, we're right in the middle of, well, let's see, have, have we, have we completely finished this? This is going to be, this is going to be transmitted to the select board and.
Yeah, that was part of the motion, Jeff.
Okay, and, and so that's, somebody has that on their, on their, their to-do list?
I, um.
Who does that? The chair, the clerk?
Whoever the sucker is.
Yeah.
Well, Michael did the one for the associate members. I, I think we can, I think we can, we can designate, we should designate someone.
Yeah, I'll do it. I don't mind. It's no big deal. So I've got the text, so I'll just send it. It's fine if I'll send it tomorrow or tonight.
Yeah, I mean, just, just make it clear that they need to, they need to, to. Yeah, that they, they, they need to send it back to us for a public hearing.
Right, yeah.
It's kind of weird. We develop it, then it goes over there. Then they have to send it back to us with instructions to hold a public hearing and then we will.
Right, and both votes don't really approve it so much as vote to move it on. So I guess the question.
So, so one, one thing I would note is that we have received, we have received no, as far as I know, we have received no instruction on the associate member.
It's, it's, well, I, I was at the meeting where they approved it, so it's in the, it's in the minutes. I could probably, but they did, they did vote to, it's very weird because they don't really approve it. They vote to sort of send it back to us for public hearing. But that, that occurred somewhere in the last month.
Can I ask, you know, a new guy question?
Please.
Where, where is it written that this process we're talking about for putting a amendment to one of the town bylaws or to the zoning bylaw? Is that, is that in the mass general laws or is that somewhere in our town bylaw?
That's in, that's in chapter 40A, section five of the.
Chapter 48, okay. Thank you.
So Deacon, I was gonna ask just to clarify, it seems like we should wait to schedule the public hearing. You were thinking that we would do a public hearing on the same night for the two amendments. So.
Indeed.
Just wait for the, the select board to send it back to us and then we can have that conversation.
Well, I mean, I'm assuming that, that we should, I'm assuming we should, we should think about when we want, we should think tonight about when we want to have the hearing.
Okay. That would be good.
I mean, they're not gonna, I mean, they're not gonna argue with us. They, they, they'll.
So Tessa, do you, this is when it gets into the how many days for notice discussion.
You need two full weeks to have it be posted. It has to be posted in the newspaper, two weeks ahead of the hearing and then one week ahead of the hearing. So I would need the language of the notice in enough time in advance to get it posted two weeks ahead of time.
At least 14 days before.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, let's see. So if we're looking at May, presume May 10th would be our normal meeting time, date?
There's not enough time for that.
Right. And then the 31st is Memorial Day. So the 17th and the 24th are probably the only, if we're looking only at Mondays, and then we could do June 7th because that's the Monday before town meetings. That might be a little tighter. So the 17th and the 24th seems like the.
I think the, I mean, and my sense is that the, the 17th is a little tight because we have to, because there's some lag time with the, with the newspaper and, and we have to make sure that, and we have to make sure the text is good too. So, I mean, I would say that we should not have it before, I would, don't think we should have it before the 24th. That'd be the earliest we should, we should shoot for.
Do I want to plan on that and then we can, I can convey that information to the select board? So they make sure that we get, get it back?
Well, that'd be, I mean, we could choose it, yeah. I mean, we could, we could choose this. We could choose the 7th too of June. But maybe that's too, we should talk about what dates we like. I mean, but not before the 24th.
Anyone not available on certain days?
I don't hear it, pretty good.
He knows. Well, if we do the 24th, it sounds like Tessa's got to put it in the paper. Probably it's two weeks. So it's probably like this Friday, the 7th or something like that.
The newspaper usually needs two day business days before posting it. So I'd have to get it for the 6th.
Yeah.
And have it post on the 10th and the 17th.
So just thinking about the select board in this process, they met yesterday, which is the 26th, which means most likely, I mean, they're meeting tomorrow, the 27th. So they probably won't meet again till the 11th. So it seems like we're looking at June if we want to have them both at the same time with a little comfort.
Do you think the select board would refuse to, to approve it as unattended business tomorrow?
Yeah. If it was crucial, yeah, but I think it's, it'd be better to, especially since it's a zoning amendment, you know, it's, it's not that they do anything substantive to it, but it'd be better to have it on an agenda item. If I were them, I would just wait two more weeks. So we could assume that they'd probably pick it up on May 11th.
Well, so, so maybe June 7th is the right date.
Yeah.
We have to, our town meeting is on the 12th?
Yes.
We have to have some kind of town, of, of report on that zoning amendment prepared between the 7th and the 12th. I don't, I, I don't know how fine you, you can cut this, whether you prepare a report and then you, and then the planning board delivers it when the article comes up at the town meeting. But I think there's, I mean, the town meeting can't act unless the planning board has submitted a report on the amendment, a recommendation and a report. Unless, I don't know, what is it, 15 days? Michael may know, has elapsed. So anyway, we would have to have a report. And that report would have to be created during that week and delivered in, in advance. Now, I don't know if you can, if you can just, I, I guess you can. You can deliver the report at the town meeting as long as it's prior to the vote. You know, when the article comes up, the planning board would have to have a report ready on its recommendations on the article.
So Jeff and, and Chair, this is Tessa. I was talking over the timeline for what the clerk needs to be involved in in this process. So Linda was kind of catching me up on this since I hadn't come up before. And she said that the report can be delivered at town meeting. That can be the first time anyone hears the report. Ideally, it does get submitted earlier. And what it, that it doesn't have to be extensive. It just has to be kind of an outline of the justification for why the amendment is being proposed is my understanding of what needs to be included.
Yeah, if I, if I can make a suggestion, we're, I'm assuming we're gonna meet on May 10th. Based on my assumptions, the select board would look, would consider the access amendment on the 11th, the day afterwards. So if we, if we're thinking about the June 7th, we can confirm that on May 10th. And maybe between now and then, Deacon, you and Tessa could work on the wording for the ad and even maybe presume that the access language is there. And then we can be ready to put the ad in on the 12th or the 13th, which should be well sufficient time in advance of June 7th. So we could do a little prep work between now and then. We can confirm the hearing date the next time we meet on May 10th.
Does the language of the ad need to be, does that need to be, you know, approved by the entire board?
I, we've just had Deacon, I think we've delegated.
Oh, I mean.
Write it.
It, no, it hasn't, it hasn't been the case that it's, that we've needed, it's needed the entire board's approval on, on amendments, on amendments that we were really worried about. We, we have sometimes consulted Donna as to the, on the text. But not usually.
Right, I mean, you know, so this goes out to the paper and you're essentially saying, you know, in public hearing for proposed amendment to bylaw, you know, dated May 24th or whatever the date is gonna be.
Yeah, and it has to, and it has to be, it has to be sufficiently descriptive of, of what the amendment says and does so that people reading, people reading the legal ad get the clue.
Okay.
I mean.
Yeah, you know.
Just have to have enough, enough substance to it.
Well, I, I was just gonna suggest that, you know, we should, we should try to get the select board to approve it tomorrow. And if they do, then we can have some extra wiggle room. And while, you know, on one hand, it's like kind of asking the select board to, you know, approve something that's not on the agenda. But on the other hand, it, it gives, it puts it out in advance of town meeting with, with more time for the public to see it.
I think we can do both.
Well, yeah, I mean, it would be conditional, right? If you can get the select board to approve tomorrow, then we can like, okay, you know, that could be known and, you know, we can designate whoever is gonna be that's gonna post the ad in the paper or, or what have you. You know, to take action, to have it be done one week ahead of time. And if it doesn't, then it will be, you know, or whatever the time would be. A little bit, you know, and what all the dates are.
I don't, I, Nathan, I don't think it makes sense. You know, if we were jammed up against town meeting, I think you, one can make that argument, but especially given that, you know, people are talking about, you know, what the amendment process. It seems more important to sort of make sure that the amendment, even though they're not really doing anything, they have a space to discuss it, that it's on the agenda. It just seems like it's a better process on that end. And we'll still have time. We just have to be on our game. But if between now and then, Deacon and Tessa work on the wording of the ad, you know, it's, we've got two weeks to sort of get that word split out. And just, then you just pop it in the page. Because if we get it to the paper like the 13th or 14th, it's three weeks' time. So, you know, we can, we can adjust what day we want to do the hearing.
So.
There's plenty of time after May 10th.
Yeah.
It's not a problem.
Yeah.
There's two notes I have to say about that. One, there is a public comment. And then the other thing is that I am not available on June 7th to take minutes because I work for the town of Levert on that day, first Monday of every month. So someone else would have to take minutes.
Okay. We won't do it on June 7th. You said there was a public comment?
Yeah, that, that's for me. I took a look at the schedule and the select board has two meetings this week. One tomorrow and one on Wednesday. So maybe, maybe there's a little more opportunity to get it in further. And my other comment, just as a member of the public, it's nice to have a little time before a public meeting, I mean, a public hearing and town meeting to think about things and to maybe ask questions and to understand what things are. So it would be better if, if the hearing weren't right before town meeting.
Agreed. Yeah, that's, I was thinking we could achieve both. So.
Well, if it, it is a different issue if, if Tess is not gonna be there for, for June 7th. I mean, we, we used to do business on Wednesdays.
Yeah, it was called We Lock Wednesday.
And the, the Wednesdays are good too. We've just gotten in the habit of only Mondays, but we haven't always done that.
Well, I guess the main question is, you know, do we want to sort of pick up on Nathan's suggestion and have it be unanticipated business with the select board, which I think would be tomorrow, because the Wednesday select board meeting is with Furcock, so I don't think there's room for that. Or just plan on the 11th and sort of get everything figured out and prepped. It seems like those are the, that's like the decision point at this point. And we don't have to, we don't have to decide on a hearing date tonight.
No, when we try out. Why not do what Nathan suggested about putting it before the select board tomorrow and their meeting tomorrow? What's the downside?
My, well, my only thought is, you know, there's been issues about, you know, people sort of saying there's not enough time to look at the amendments and stuff, so there still will be a public hearing. It's, it's just another place where people might say, it wasn't, it wasn't on the agenda. I mean, I complain when things aren't on the agenda. So, I could appreciate that. But I, you know, Deacon can ask, it's, it's not like it's a terrible thing, they might just say no.
Yeah, I mean, they, they're free to, they're free to say no, and you know, then, you know, I mean, it just gives, you know, you can, someone can ask the town clerk to post the proposed amendment to the website so that everyone can see it, and, and then you have your public hearing.
Okay, well, I guess, if I'm sending it to them, Deacon, are you okay with me making that suggestion?
Sure, sure.
Okay, I'll do that. I'll do it tonight, then.
Only one sentence.
Thank you, Jeff.
I think we're ready for the next item.
Okay. Annual report from Wheelock. I knew. This was, this was noted, this was noted by Penny Jakes. I know that she's anxious to, to get this done, and that was why, that's why it's been on our agendas.
And Miriam's raised it with me, I don't know if there's something Miriam wanted to speak to about it.
Oh, I have, I have contact information from, from Becky, from the new owners or the new leasers or lesses, was it lessy or lessor, Michael? Which one is the one that does the leasing?
Lessy. Yeah, lessy is the tenant, lessor is the landlord. I like to say landlord or tenant, that's how I keep it straight.
All right, so I have contact information from the tenant, and I have left a phone message with the person who's supposed to be the contact. And in the phone message, reminded them that there's a special permit that went along with that project that has a number of conditions and requirements, including an annual report and other types of things having to do with the vegetation out there. And have asked him to call me and possibly attend a planning board meeting to address these issues and just make sure that they're familiar with the, what's in that permit and what they have to do. Because I don't recall seeing an annual report, and I know there are some issues with vegetation management out there. So, hopefully, we can get them up to speed with their permit and meet them face to face in one of our planning board meetings here soon.
So, I'm it's, I'd sort of like to just let Miriam chat about it. She raised a question with me about if we could use our ability to get a consultant on their dime to, you know, they should come to the meeting and do what you just suggested, Jeff, but I think, being that it's been a few years and we haven't gotten an annual report, that if we got someone who was monitoring it and writing a report that they were paying for, because I think you volunteered to do it, and it seems like that's, it's way back when. You, yeah, and it's not a viable solution, so we should get someone who's actually, you know, doing it, and that's their job. But I'm articulating that as well, so if, if I can, just ask Miriam if she could say it better than I did.
Yeah, so, I'm on the Conservation Commission. We've just started talking about this issue and we, we didn't have time to make any recommendations to the planning board, but I think that might be forthcoming at our next meeting. One of the things that has been raised at ConCon meetings, Janice Stone comes to a lot of our meetings and she is the land use clerk for the Hadley Conservation Commission, and there's a number of solar projects in Hadley. And what she has shared with us, and she could probably give the planning board some information about this, is that they routinely use third-party environmental monitors and who have, and there are people who, and I don't know what kind of certifications they need to have, but they, they hire people who have some particular qualifications who do site monitoring on an ongoing basis for solar projects, not just during construction phase, but during operations. And apparently, it involves going out during storm events and documenting the condition of the stormwater features and making reports and such. Janice would probably be happy to come to a planning board meeting or write something to describe what, what her experience has been with, what they use.
So, there's another public comment, Suzie Mosher has her hand up.
I was trying to follow along and talk about the driveway issue needing an amendment. I thought we had, I thought the committee had concluded the other one, and then I was told that that was the place to put in other possible issues that might need to be amended.
Why don't we get to that right after we finish this here, since we already started with this? I don't think this is going to take a long time.
So, it's, Jeff, did you say you reached out to the current tenants already?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that would be great, I mean, to have them come to a meeting and do a presentation, you know, an oral presentation on that annual report. So, I think it's sort of two things, one is catch us up to date now, and then it would be interesting to figure out what an ongoing solution is, because it's going to be there for, you know, 20-plus years or so. So, we shouldn't be doing catch-up all the time.
Part of the, part of the issue with the Conservation Commission is not just what the vegetation is underneath the arrays, but also having some ongoing oversight to ensure that stormwater systems are functioning properly, because if they weren't, and there was a release into a wetland, no one would know of in-town government. And the Conservation Commission would have jurisdiction over that, but, but there's no mechanism, because there's no environmental monitor, there's no mechanism for reporting that to the Conservation Commission unless the operators self-reported.
So, Jeff, do you, do you have a sense of when these folks are going to get back?
No, but I, I will be persistent. And maybe see if I could round them up for when's our next meeting, on the 10th?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Mother's Day, see if I could get them to that meeting.
Okay.
There's a public comment from Michael Pill.
Am I recognized?
Please, please.
Yeah, I'm, to put it politely, pissed off, because I represented the original applicant, and if they're not file, if they're not following their special permit conditions, and I've also seen at least generalized complaints that there may be flooding, and that certainly links with Miriam's point about whether or not the stormwater facilities are being monitored. I am quite willing to be the bad guy, because I owe nothing to these people. They were never my clients. I'm quite happy to send a zoning enforcement request to the building inspector, asking him to issue a cease and desist order to cease the operation of the project on the grounds that they are violating their special permit. And so, Jeff, I hope you will let them know that a local attorney who advocated for the project initially is deeply concerned that their apparent breaches of the special permit obligations, which God knows they should have read when they took over that project, have in effect put my credibility on the line, and I'm not going to put up with it. And anytime, you know, any individual member of the planning board is welcome to ask me. If they don't respond, let me put it this way. All I need to know is if, are they responding or not? That's a factual question, okay? If they do not respond, Jeff, in a time you consider appropriate and in a manner you consider appropriate, and if they don't also address whatever concerns Miriam and the Conservation Commission has, I would like to be informed of those facts, and I will, on my own, as an individual citizen, pro bono, send an enforcement request under Chapter 48, Section 7, to the Building Commission.
Okay, and if they ask who the attorney is, I'll tell them it's Mark E. Salomon.
So, so look, Michael Pill, having spoken, can, can, can we, can we postpone this discussion until May 10?
Yeah, I just want to ask, Deacon, do you want to invite Janice to that meeting as well and bundle?
I'm happy to invite Janice. Now, does, I was under the perhaps mistaken impression that she didn't, she wasn't in town anymore?
Janice?
Yeah, I've seen her around.
You have?
Well.
She's still on, she's still on some town boards.
But I mean, do you call her at the old number?
No, you call her on her cellphone.
Do you have that?
I do, I'll email it to you.
Thank you, thank you, because, yeah, okay, great. So, so I'll figure that this, this discussion on Wheelock reporting is, is done for tonight. And, and, and we'll take it up again on May 10. Okay, and so, let's go back to Suzie's concern about driveways. I'm not.
So, my, Jeff, I'm going to put you on the spot. My understanding currently is the driveways have to be under 1,000 feet, but the ZBA can approve a variance for some factors that are like topographical or something along those lines, so.
Soil, topography. Those are the three, those are the three reasons for the hardship. You could have one or more of those reasons for the hardship, and then you have the ability to at least make the case for a variance.
Yeah, so. Three again, soil, topography, and?
Shape, usually lot shape.
So, it seems to me, if there's a variance for some objective reason of one of those three, then on the face of it, the ZBA could, you know, grant it to be longer, you know, the, the more substantive question is, you know, just extending it to allow uses, and you know, I, I think this is a longer conversation, but my sense is, the FC is FC for a reason. And the more you have long driveways going into it, you start, you start invading the FC and dividing it up in different ways. So, it, it seems like the 1,000 feet is generally in the zoning bylaw. And again, it's not specific to the solar bylaw, with the idea of preserving the FC as forest conservation. So, that's, as long as there's, there's objective reasons to get a variance, I think that's fine.
Well, here, here are some, here are some factors about that 1,000-foot driveway limit. That came in 2008 with our overall zoning overhaul package, which was, in many ways, organized around trying to protect the FC, which is our backland, which is a unique resource in Chutesbury. We have thousands of acres of backland that's relatively wild, and we need to establish access to it, but not unlimited access. So, the 500, the 1,000 feet will get you past, will get you out of the RR district and at that, and 500 feet into the FC. So, it's, it's definitely long enough to penetrate well into the FC. The Wheelock Solar Farm was built under that restriction. I mean, their youth doesn't start for 1,000 feet in, they were able to work with it. There is a legitimate public purpose of protecting the backland from being fragmented and divided up and and, and overdeveloped. There's also a safety concern with the length of driveways for fire vehicles and, and and police and other types of, of access. The longer the driveway, the steeper, the more windy, twisty, farther back you go, the more difficult access for safety purpose becomes. Again, it's pre-existing, it's not related to, it's not related to solar. It pre-existed, it came from 2008, and it's universally applicable to all use.
I think Jeff froze.
Yeah, he's stuck.
Just Chutesbury, and it's, there is a variance that would apply to these types of things. Say if there was a large wetland near the road and you needed to go around it, your driveway may have to be longer than 1,000 feet. You could get a variance for that, if there was a rock ledge that you needed to go around, or if your property had a buildable area that was way back, it was so narrow for a long way, you couldn't build anything, but the only place where it opened up was way back. Those are all instances where you could successfully apply for a variance, because you met the variance criteria. So, anyway, that's just a little information on it. I personally think it's a good thing for Chutesbury to have. And I don't favor altering it just because a project comes in that where they've chosen a piece of land that can't meet it. If that's the case.
My recollection, perhaps mistaken, is that in one meeting, Donna, Donna said that they could also do a subdivision road?
A subdivision road potentially would, would not be a driveway, would not be subject to that.
But I mean, that they could get access through a subdivision road?
Yeah, possibly, our subdivision roads have length limits too, unless they, they loop and reconnect back out to a public road. You can only build so long of a cul-de-sac. It's actually shorter. Michael Pill made it very short when he wrote on subdivision regulations.
Thank you, Michael.
Deacon, you've got some, some people with their hands up.
I can't see them, I, I will call on.
And Suzie Mosher.
Well, let's call on Suzie.
So, when a, when the zoning bylaw was drafted and it was meant to protect forest land, that I'm not sure that the humans involved with, because we're all human, could envision what this project would look like and what, what would help, what it could, what zoning bylaws it could use to meet this. Just as they didn't understand the draft that had to create access for use three point six. I don't think the bylaw that was drafted for in two thousand and twenty helps or works out this issue because forest conservation land is inherently backland. And now you have a limit of a thousand feet. If there was a solar project, you might want it back farther than a thousand feet from the road. And this is an opportunity to think about the impact of having a thousand feet as the limit.
I was, I was just told that there were other people besides Susie with their hands up. I don't.
Don, Don Walkoff.
Okay, Don.
So I, I just wanted to speak to something that Jeff said about the, the length of these roads and what Susie just said. One of the only endangered species we have in this town is Eastern wood turtle. Takes about forty years for a turtle to find habitat where it can lay its eggs and they successfully hatch and the young survive. Roads inherently divide the land and turtles don't often recognize our roads. And I, I shudder to think what a, a subdivision road might do. My point here is that the Forest Conservation District only needs to have access to it for someone to do development projects. It doesn't have to have a highway paved down the middle of it. I know that's not what you guys are saying. But I just want you to be aware of the fact that many species that require contiguous forest habitat don't exist anywhere else in the state, in the state, except for Chutesbury, which uniquely seems to have a very large contiguous block of forest.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't see any hands up.
I'm content with moving on at this point.
I, I put my hand up, but this is a poor.
Well, please speak.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say that there's so much we don't know about all the species of plants and animals and microbes that we coexist with. And globally, there's been an enormous impact by human activity on ecosystems of all types. And you know, we, we have these big chunks of forests and we don't know really all the impacts of putting a road through them or building solar. And we might be doing irreparable damage to what is rare and unique. We just don't know.
Okay, so I'm going to move on unless somebody wants to speak some more about driveways. Let, let's move on to a report on the D O E R meeting.
Okay, I think that's me, but I, I can't remember. When we had our joint planning board, select board meeting, I think I reported out on this. Someone could, I don't want to repeat what I've said before. So are we processing it or did I not report out?
You, you did, you did send a memo around to everybody regarding the results of that meeting.
But I never, we never talked about it.
Maybe not, but that was a while ago. You said that, that memo.
So would it be helpful to just go, go over it then?
I, I think we should have some discussion. I mean, is it, this, this is a notable meeting.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let me, I'll, why don't I, I'll start it off and then I guess we can discuss. So, you know, the genesis of the meeting was, I did some research on public entity and that came out of the presentation from AMP where they were talking about this HOV lane and public private partnership. And I was trying to understand that and that's where I discovered the public entity concept by looking at the, the smart regs. And I emailed D O E R to get some information. And it took a while for them to get back to me. And they, they basically sent me a bureaucratic email that said nothing. And they said nicely at the end, if we could be of further assistance, let us know. So I wrote back and I basically said, you didn't answer my question. And at that point, they suggested a, a conference call and they invited, they said they wanted to have Becky to participate. And I thought it'd make sense, given my earlier points, that someone from the select board be part of it since it really isn't pub. It wasn't planning board purview. It's really select board purview. And I was really initiating the information gathering because I wanted to understand. So that was how the meeting came about. And I think there was maybe six or seven people from D O E R. There was a guy who directs the smart program, a couple of program managers, two legal counsel for D O E R. It was a little cluster of them. And then it was Becky, Rita, myself, and then Elena Cohen from Joe Cumberford's office. And the idea was to basically understand what was going on. You know, what, because D O E R is the horse's mouth, they wrote the regs. So that was how it started. And the, what came out of it, and I think the important part is there's the operations and maintenance agreement that I had mentioned to Michael earlier. AMP originally had talked, mentioned, called that an MOU. You know, MOU is not a contract. And MOU is a memorandum of understanding. It's a lightweight document. So the question was, what does D O E R require to designate or to codify an agreement between a municipality and a developer? So that one, so the developer can be designated a public entity status. That was the first question. What D O E R said is they've never done this before. And I think one of the things that's important was like in many situations when you write policy, there's unintended consequences or scenarios you didn't predict. And so what they articulated was they developed a public entity concept. The requirement is that either municipality has to own or operate a project or a municipality or governmental body has to get a hundred percent of the energy. Like those are the two ways you become a public entity. And what they articulated was they were imagining a municipality who wanted municipal solar, but didn't have publicly owned land. So they had to go get private land to do their municipal development. That was what they told us they were thinking about. So they had a whole different construct in mind. So they were, you know, they're very clear to say, we don't, we don't know what we're going to accept, but we can tell you that it would have to be contractual in nature. Well, we took away, and this is really select board purview, but you, you, you need a project, you have to have some defined development that you're talking about, and it's defined services and defined compensation. So regardless of what the end result is, it's not an MOU. It's much more involved than that and it would be signed by the select board. D O E R volunteered to sort of consult a little bit, but there's, you know, there's guardrails on what they can do and what they can say. So that's sort of, that's the vehicle for becoming a public entity. And no, stop sharing, I'll share it. Mary Louish. Is that Mary? Who's sharing? Mary, stop sharing, please.
How can she be sharing without permission?
I don't know. Tessa, can you have her unshare and I'll share my document?
I'm, I'm working on it. I, I had it selected that people could share, so I can.
Okay, yeah, that was not helpful. So anyway, because I'll just go, I'll just go through my documented, it'd be easier, you can see it. Oh, can you make me, let me share, Tessa?
So there's only two settings. It's either everyone or me.
No, make me a co-host and then I can share.
Okay, that I can do.
Yeah.
I first have to find you in the list.
The joys of Zoom. Okay, cool. Here we go. This should be it. Yes. Okay. You guys see this?
Yeah.
Okay, so so I covered this part, what the intent was. That was the first question. And then this is, this is the stuff about eligibility. So in order to become a, a public entity, it either has to be owned or operated by a municipality or governmental entity. Or the owner has assigned a hundred percent of the output to municipalities. So those are the two ways that you can become a public entity through the, the regs. And these are new. They put these in place in April, so they weren't, they didn't exist in the, in the original smart regs. So the, and then this gets to the operation. Michael, this is the operations and maintenance agreement that they need, that documents, that there is an agreement and that a, a project becomes public entity status. So the interesting thing, and this is again, this is not really our purview. But if you were to say, what is the benefit to a developer? There are huge benefits and I'm speaking to right here. So there's a few things that in order to get smart incentives, which is, you know, money to support your project, which basically makes the business, business plan profitable in Massachusetts. So they need proof of interconnection to utilities. They need proof of required governmental permits and they need proof of site control. That's normally what happens. If you become a public entity, you don't need proof of interconnection before getting tentative approval. And you don't need proof of governmental permits before being granted smart status. So normally the process would be, a project would come before, you know, us, the planning board, looking for a special permit. They would have to go through the entire special permit process. And at the end, if they were granted a special permit, they can then get in line for smart incentives. So that's normally, so what ends up happening? If you get to be a public entity, you reverse that process. And the reason that's important is that there is a line for money for smart incentives. And the money is given out in what they call blocks. So it's sort of blocks and tranches. So people who are first in line get a higher rate of reimbursement. And if you're farther back in line, you get a lower rate, which means less money. And it's also a volume thing. So if you're in front of the line, you can get a higher rate for more volume of energy generated. And if you're farther in line, you get less, a lesser rate and maybe the volume is not as favorable. So it's much better for them financially to get in front, both because they don't have to go through the hoops of permitting before they get it and they get to secure a higher rate at that point. So that's a really big thing. The other benefit, which I referenced earlier, is that the smart incentives, they have categories. There's category one, there's category two, and there's category three. Category one is the preferred one. And it's things that, you know, are brownfields and rooftops and parking lots and all those other kinds of things. If you become a public entity, you get into that preferred status. And the way the regs are written, if you're not a public entity and you want to build in environmentally, it's in this right here. Priority habitat, core habitat, critical nature landscape. If you want to build in that, normally, you probably wouldn't get approved for smart credits. If you get to be a public entity and therefore become category one, you can develop that. And so this is the tricky part where the planning board actually comes into play. And I think we're, it's good for us to be clear that smart credits are about getting money. And our special permit process is separate. So the timing is such that if the town agreed to go into a contractual agreement and therefore the development became a public entity project, they could get in line, they could be category one, they can get their incentive money. They would still have to go through our permitting project, process. And if they didn't get the permit, obviously the project wouldn't go forward. But it's, it's basically, they would be, have approved for the state for building in places that we might not support from environmental practice, perspectives. That's sort of the little bit of a dance. And then I think the only other thing I would say, and it gets to what Michael was saying earlier, it's actually a four cent adder that they get as a public entity. And I did ask the question because if we were to go down this line, I asked, is there anything that would keep the town from revenue sharing? You know, it's so, it's not one percent out of two cents. It's actually AMP had suggested two cents out of four. But, you know, if there's, there's nothing that D O E R says prohibits us from revenue sharing. It's just that it's never been done before, so they don't have a, they don't have a model. This is, this is the model. So that's basically what came out of the meeting. It was, it was really, it was, it was helpful to know what they know and what they don't know.
There's a public comment from Miriam Devon.
Could you just clarify, how, what's going to be the process for an operations and maintenance contract getting approved? Does the select board prove it or does it have to go to town meeting or a special town meeting?
Well, I, you know, my sense from these conversations and then having been a, you know, a select board member is that it's a select board, you know, so going to town meeting could be a political process where the select board says, we want to get a sense of the town. And if town meeting approves it, then the select board would sign the contract. But that's a political decision. I think technically speaking, the select board signs all the contracts, you know, whether you get a grant, they sign the grant. It's just like any other contract for the town, they represent the town in contracting.
But the contract, Michael, for clarification, the contract to pay Chutesbury money to operate and maintain the facilities equals public entity?
Yes, exactly. That's the trigger. Very, and separate from pilot, like pilot's going to happen no matter what. And I think the thing that, you know, came up in discussions outside of this meeting, but and this was actually, it was interesting because what D O E R said is it's a public entity, meaning that if we're doing the operations, we can't just contract out to somebody. You know, there has to, you have to have enough integrity to the project to say it is actually public. So does that mean there's a, a staff person overseeing the contractors? Or, you know, you've got some grounds people who are actually public employees. There's no answer to that, but I think you, it's not just a hundred percent pass through. There's got to be some skin in the game from the municipality, but what that looks like is unclear. But most of the money won't come to the town, it'll go to the operations. And it's not, it's not just mowing the grass, it's operating the project. So the whole kit and caboodle, all the technical stuff.
Which, which in my mind is an argument for actually thinking about revenue sharing. Because in, in my mind at least, that really becomes a public entity.
Right.
Public partnership.
Yeah, and that's the interesting thing. I mean, if, going back to the first point of what was the intent of D O E R, that they were trying to support municipalities who wanted to develop solar power and couldn't. You know, we don't have enough capital upfront to do it ourselves. So, you know, if you genuinely were a partnership, that's a different conversation. I think, you know, you've raised before and I agree with, you know, being a hired hand is not a partnership. You know, so it's a whole different conversation that needs to happen.
It seemed to me, and it seemed to me, I, I missed part of the meeting, but it seemed to me that they, they really refused to, to answer the question of what, what constituted adequacy in, in the, in operating, as far as the town operating the thing. They really didn't answer that.
No.
There's another public comment.
Go, Michael.
Okay, thank you. Let me, let me do some brainstorming. I've, I've, I've thrown this out in informal discussions with Donna McNichol, but she didn't have any answers. It's the walk where there is no path and leave a trail. Okay, somebody always has to set the precedent. And I'm certainly willing to do what I can to help on a pro bono basis. And let me throw out just some thoughts with a brainstorming spirit. When I was in the hydro business in the early 80s, we got federal money to do a study on municipal utilities. What we found then, and what I've seen since then, is that if you live in Holyoke or South Hadley, or one of the other places that have municipal utilities, number one, the constituency is the population of the town, okay? The people who run that utility are accountable to the people who live in the town. There are no investors who expect a profit. The only constituents are the ratepayers. And generally, you get, I think, better service from a municipal utility. Schutzbury has a municipal light board, we've established a municipal utility, even though to date, all it does is run broadband. And, you know, I'm an old hippie radical, power to the people, okay? And, and I, let's just throw out some thoughts. For years, I've wrestled with some people in the legislature about the fact that what blocked municipal utilities in the 1920s by the private utilities was, we cannot take their transmission lines by eminent domain. But if we can control the generation, okay? That is at least a start to a municipal utility. And by God, if we had a municipal utility, bit by bit, the power lines that are susceptible to falling trees would be put into underground utilities, that would be expensive, it would take years, but by God, we would no longer have to worry about wind and trees knocking out our grid. Now, I'm thinking pretty long-term, but if we can get enough money out of this, again, I'm just brainstorming, is it possible we might even begin if the, the population of the town wants it, to say, let's start potentially creating our own parallel distribution system? And maybe being able, if we've got the money from these projects to, to do that, say to the utility, maybe you would like to transfer your distribution system? In which case, our electricity would come from Schutzbury Municipal Light and Power Department, just like Holyoke, South Hadley. Now, I'm, I'm throwing that out as brainstorming, but having our municipal utility, and I'll do whatever I can to help broaden its scope from broadband to include taking charge of this would be a first step. We would then be in control of generation, and the potential next step is distribution. I'm not sure where or how fast we could go, but it's a, it's a step towards power to the people.
Great, yeah, so not to monopolize the talking part, but I'll just respond, Michael, quickly. I did ask both AMP and DOER about the MLP, because we have a structure for it, so. And AMP said they didn't know, and DOER said they didn't know, so no, no, it is that point, if it hasn't been done before. I think the interesting thing, using the MLP example, is Gail Huntress is a town employee because she's the MLP manager, and then we contract out with Crocker for all their technical expertise. And it, my sense is, if you, one word to explore that, it's, it's a, it's a deeper, broader conversation, because you're bringing on employees, and one of the points that's come up is employees retire, and we're on the hook for, you know, retirement, and there's a lot of people in town who want to have less employees as opposed to more, so that's a vibrant conversation. And, you know, and I did, I, the revenue sharing, or I think I asked AMP in one of those conversations, would they consider building out into town? You know, so rather than going down Pratt Corner into the substation, like you had mentioned earlier, that they actually build into town so that we had a, you know, a branch of our own local energy. Of course, that's more expensive, they don't want to do that, but, I mean, like, those are, those are discussions that if we were to say municipal partnership, what does that mean to the town? It's more than money, maybe it's energy, you know, self-sufficiency or partial self-sufficiency. There's, you know, the employee part's definitely an issue, because there's people who don't want to have more employees, they want to have less. So it's, my personal sense is it's worth a conversation, but it's not a quick conversation, it's a long, complicated conversation.
And it sounds like it goes back, for example, the people who are concerned about adding more town employees, the question becomes, is the revenue sharing going to be sufficient that we can say to those folks, listen, every dime that this person will cost, including their pension, will be covered by the revenue sharing? And then there'll be more money on top of that coming into the town to use for lower taxes, public improvements, or whatever. That sounds like a, like, you know, potentially the key. If, if the people who are concerned about employees are concerned about money, it, it all comes back, and, and it's like a classic business negotiation. What, how, what is the maximum amount that we can get out of AMP? And in, in, you know, it's like in any business negotiation, you want to know the other side's top dollar, bottom dollar, and our goal is to get as much as we possibly can. And at a minimum, what we can truthfully say to AMP then is, listen, folks, we've got a constituency. So one part of the revenue sharing has to be, every dime that this employee will cost, this additional manager now and in the future must come out of project revenue, not out of the taxpayer's pocket.
And we don't have any studies, I mean, I think, one thing I would say is, to even embark on a conversation, you need, you need independent numbers. And how that gets paid for and how that gets done, like, that's where the long part comes in.
There, there we go.
If I may, can I just jump in with, with another new guy question? There's a lot of talk about, you know, what, what the town would be obligated, obligated to pay, and I guess this would go for any municipal employee, regardless of, you know, what they're doing. And, you know, people are talking about how the town's going to be on the hook for retirement. And, you know, I'm, I'm wanting to know, you know, is, is this even a true thing? I mean, I feel like, you know, when you're employed, you know, there could be a matching program, or, or, you know, the, the town would be able to potentially, you know, put money into a pension plan or retirement. But once this is, you know, once your employment is done, then the obligation for the town to continue contributing would, would also be done.
Welcome to the public sector, Nathan.
To be, to have a, to run, to operate a pension and, and, you know, meet certain funding guidelines under like a defined benefit plan, or, you know, like.
The public sector, they have retirement benefits.
What's that?
It's, it's the public sector, so there are retirement benefits that go on.
I understood, but the public, I mean, you know, I, I, I used to deal, you know, I used to work in retirement, right? A lot of towns and cities that have retirement plans had, you know, a plan where, you know, you, you know, the town can match it, but then it's not a defined benefit plan where it's like, you know, Bernie Madoff goes and steals everything, and the town's on the hook, it's, you know, you, you know, you have a, you know, the employee has a opportunity to defer money pre-tax from their paycheck, and the, and the employer maybe has a plan where they're going to say, okay, I want to match up to 5% of your salary. And you match it, you know, during the time of the employment, and then that's it. I mean, you administer the plan, but that's not a continued financial obligation to retirement.
Right.
Am I missing something?
No, I guess, I mean, I don't want to not answer that, but I, I just was thinking, this is exactly the select, like, this is not our purview at all, you know, the money stuff, the retirement stuff.
That is a good point, it's not.
Yeah, and, and I only raise it because I want to get, make sure we, before we wrap up, that I talk about the open meeting law. So, like, if there's anything that touches on our stuff, we should do. But, you know, it's, it, that would be a big discussion, changing how retirement works for town employees, I mean, talk about.
We're getting, we're getting off the meeting with DOER.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I mean, we.
That's true.
So, do we want to talk more about DOER?
I, I don't think there's much more to share, it was really, the linchpin is the public entity process. And it really only, the only thing that touched, it doesn't change our reality as a planning board. I think the only thing that we should know is that if a public entity got approved for incentives, they still have to come to the planning board and get special permits approved. So if they could find themselves approved for incentives and denied for the project, that's a possibility. Or we could find ourselves feeling somewhat pressured because they decided they wanted to build projects in environmentally sensitive areas, they got state funding for it, and then the town gets asked, is asking, why are you guys rejecting that if the state said it was okay? Like, those are the two scenarios I think are relevant to us.
Okay. Yeah, so. I just, I mean, I think we should think about wrapping up. I think we should talk briefly about the open meeting law, and the other thing, which I did not put on the agenda, because I, because it got by me, is I, talking about talking about Penny Jake's letter suggesting that that Tess's sister talked to the various solar-involved boards, which, which, yeah. But let's, let's just, let's do quickly the open meeting law, and then move on to, and then move on to Tess's sister.
Okay, so, this would be me again. So we had the joint select board, planning board meeting, there was difference of opinion about what a subcommittee was, and so there was an open meeting law training by the Attorney General's Office last week, I think it was, that I attended. And I asked some of these questions in the chat, and they basically said, call our hotline, so I called to left a message. I spoke to an Assistant Attorney General last week, and I wrote this up. And Grace didn't want me to distribute it to the other committees, but I felt like it was important to bring it back to us, so that we're clear about the process. So this, it's somewhat subtle, but I think important. So I talked to a woman who is an Assistant Attorney General in the Division of Open Government, so they're the people who oversee open meeting laws, they know this stuff. The first couple of points are pretty straightforward, but, you know, she confirmed deliberations only exchange between a quorum of members of a public body, including serial communication. So if one person talks to another person, talks to another person, so in our case, a quorum is four, if, if there's seven of us. The key there is, what's a public body? And we can get to that in a second, but if it's a public body, anything below a quorum is not deliberation, and is totally legal. So the other factual thing is, it's usually termed a subcommittee, but a subcommittee can be anything, it can be a working group, an ad hoc committee, whatever. In instances, people say, oh, we're not a subcommittee, we're just a working group. It doesn't matter what you call it, if it meets certain parameters, you become a subcommittee, which is, I'll get into. And then importantly, by definition, an individual member of a committee is not a subcommittee, you have to be more than one person to be a subcommittee. So if we tap Nathan to do something, for example, he's not a subcommittee, it would have to be Nathan and Linda together would be a subcommittee, or, you know, three of us. So this is the interesting stuff, these next three bits. So a subcommittee is only created by action of a committee, and that means either designated by the chair or by a vote of the committee. And if no formal action is taken by the full, full body, a subcommittee can't be created. And so that means that, you know, like, when we talk about developing a bylaw, you know, that we might just either vote, or Deacon might say something, or just generally speaking, we'll say, you know, Jeff, why don't you work on that and then come back next month and let us know? So even though we didn't take a vote, there's a general sentiment that we're designating Jeff to do a task. Into, but if we're designated one person, it's not a subcommittee. You would have to, we'd have to have this conversation to say, Michael and Jeff, go off and do this stuff, and either we vote on it, that Michael and Jeff will do it, or Deacon says that, or in the context of the discussion, it's very clear that the board's assuming that we will do that. But if there's no action in any of those ways by the, the public body, then there's not a subcommittee. And that's really important. A twist on that, which is really interesting, and there's a case from 2017 that came up. But just say, for example, we told Jeff to go work on the access from the roads bylaw. And I chimed in and said, I'll help you with that, so I volunteered to help him. That doesn't create a subcommittee. The, the body, the planning board designated Jeff, and the fact that I'm volunteering doesn't mean that I got designated by the board, it just means I volunteered. And what's interesting is, when a person gets designated, so I'll use Nathan again as an example, so if we tap Nathan and say, Nathan, go off and do some task, Nathan can then go talk to Donna, he can talk to other experts and talk to other towns, he can also talk to other members of the planning board, as long as it's subquorum. So if Nathan calls me and said, I wrote this up, why do you think? That's cool. If he then calls Jeff and says, hey, what do you think? That's cool, because it's only three, as long as it's three people, it's fine.
Michael, let me, yeah, quick question, is that not considered serial communication?
It is, but it's only three people, it's subquorum.
Okay.
So if you get to a fourth person, then it's problematic, but if it's only three, and that's really sort of interesting, because what I took away was, there was concern that if someone gets tapped, and then you talk to someone else, you automatically become a subcommittee by association, but it's not the case. So that's really important, so if we, for example, as we go forward, say, someone wants to develop an amendment, we say, you know, X person, you go off and develop it, that person can talk to one or two people on the committee to get feedback, totally cool. The other last thing about it is if there's a subquorum number of members, and I'll use the access to roads as an example. So it was in between meetings that Jeff decided that access to roads was something we should address. So he emailed me with some language and said, what do you think? So that happened off the radar of the planning board, there was no official designation for the planning board, it was just two members taking initiative, and so those two members, even three members, can talk to each other, you know, share information, come up with a draft, and then bring it forth to the body to deliberate at its next meeting. But there's nothing illegal about members on their own initiative, who are not designated by the body, communicating to bring something forth. You know, so if there might be something out of this meeting, and, you know, Linda and Robert say, God, I'm really moved by this, I want to, I, we want, we should work on it. If they work on something and then bring it back forward the next meeting, totally cool. And if they rope, rope in Steve, because it's only three people, it's still subquorum, that's okay. And then the last point that she said, and I think this is sort of, you know, this is the guardrail, this important, is, it's really sort of sticking to the spirit or the intent of the rule, as a rule of thumb. So if, if, if we know that the planning board has to designate two people to create a subcommittee, if everyone, you know, if Deacon says, does anyone want to be on the subcommittee? And everyone's looking at each other and sort of, you know, nudging each other, but no one says anything? The fact that we're, you know, if we don't say anything, there's, we haven't designated anybody, and that's, that's true, but there's an intent behind it. So, I, you know, you just want to not skirt the rules by being silent, we should just have a good process where we designate someone to know what the rules are. So, you know, some of this was very affirming, and a couple of things were surprising to me, but I thought it does inform how we go forward, because in order to get this work done, you need to do stuff in between meetings, it just doesn't work any other way. So I think it's, it's possible to do the work in between, and it's very possible not to be illegal. And we shouldn't be scared of, you know, a couple of us, or three of us talking to each other, even on stuff that matters to the committee, because it's not illegal. And if we want to get something done, we can designate some person to take the lead on a project, that's cool. You can also, you know, we could designate two people or three people, but then you become a public body. If you become, if we're actually designating Steve and Nathan and Jeff to do something, it becomes a public body, in which case you have to notice it, and you have to have minutes. That's, that's sort of the threshold, so that's what I learned during my summer vacation.
Excuse me. Thank you, Michael, that was actually very helpful.
Yeah. Good.
Okay. Anybody want to, want to talk about this one before we move on? Okay. I'll bring this up, the board recently received a communication from Penny Jake's suggesting that the, that there be a joint meeting of select board, planning board, CONCOM, and open space to interact with Zara Dowling, Tess's sister, who is, who is doing conservation work for UMass, and has done a bunch of other stuff. This struck me as a really good idea, and it seems to me that the planning board it seems to me that the planning board um, might want to decide to, um, to write to the, to the boards that, uh, that Penny wrote to in support of this idea.
Deacon, this is Miriam. If people, before you take that vote, go ahead, but, um, I was at a training that, a Zoom training that Zara did or Zara did for the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners a few weeks back. And, um, they did circulate the PowerPoint handouts. And if you would like to see that, I can send it to the select board, I mean, to the planning board.
Sure, that'd be great.
What did you think, Mira?
She had a lot of interesting things to say. I mean, one of the things that, um, that I found interesting was talking about the pollinator meadow certification. I asked her some questions about it. I think it's relevant for shoots berries, especially thinking about, you know, how are you going to get things to grow under solar panels?
Yeah, and, and a quarter of a cent per kilowatt hour if you're, if you would do it.
Yeah. It's a lot of fertilizer. It'll pay for.
Yeah. So so, um.
Well, I, I think it's a good idea, but then, you know, I have to say that.
I, I know, I know, Steve. Was she, I left a message on your phone and Penny never got back to me.
No, she's on, she's been on vacation. She's, she still is.
Oh, well, that's why.
Yeah, no, she comes back, uh, Wednesday night.
Oh, okay. I was wondering why she didn't get back to me.
She was just being rude, that's all. No, 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 she hasn't been around for a couple, two weeks now.
Yeah.
So Deacon, um, this involves advising the planning board on vegetation to grow in and around solar facilities?
Oh, I think it, I, no, I think it has to, I think, I think this proposed um, session with, with Zara Dowling was intended to cover a wide range of solar issues. And, and we'd be able to, we'd be able to ask a lot of questions of someone who's really well informed.
I really do think it's a good idea. So whatever we need to do to support it, I'm game.
Yeah, we're, learning is a good thing.
I think so. That's, uh, I, I think the last line of her, of her note was, we have a lot to learn. So, um, should I'm happy to write a letter in, in support of this. Does someone want to make a motion?
I, I'll make a motion that Deacon write a letter in support of, of, of this consultant doing a workshop or Zoom session with us.
Whatever it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The famous Dowling sister.
Yes, yes.
I'll second.
Heard a second yet.
Second.
Okay, discussion. I'll, I'll call the roll. Uh, Jeff?
Hi.
Nathan?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Uh, Linda?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
And I'm an eye. Okay, good. I think we should wrap up.
It's only nine twenty-five.
I know, exactly. I haven't eaten yet.
Uh, Chair, I had one very short comment, uh, if that was okay.
Please.
That I emailed you about. Uh, so this is concerns the Conservation Commission and the, where they're at. So this probably is more relevant when a project actually comes in or like right as a project is coming in. But the Conservation Commission wanted me to inform the planning board that issues have arisen when, um, when the wetland, so currently the Conservation Commission is reviewing wetland delineation mapping on six parcels. Um, four of them have been issued. There's two remaining. These permits that delineate the wetlands for three years. And while this, during this process, because it's been peer reviewed and actually, uh, more wetlands have been found than were originally mapped. So there's been map revisions. In some cases, the flagging numbers have been complicated because of the wetlands, additional well and so that have been added to the maps. The, through the discussion with the peer reviewer, the Conservation Commission has added a condition that says if a notice of intent comes back in front of the commission, that's the permitting that could come through if a project would interfere with wetland jurisdiction, if it ca- came back to the commission. That they would ask for flags to be refreshed regarding the mapping of the, of the wetlands. However, they did, did not have the ability to say if any project comes to the town, even to the planning board, those flags have to be refreshed. Um, so they did, the commission just wanted to say for the planning board to be aware that they might want to request if a, if a project comes in that does not go in front of the Conservation Commission, can, if the planning board would consider asking them to refresh the flag. So it'd be easier in the field to follow the numbering system around the wetlands. Because if you, so, um, if you show up, you could follow where the wetlands were based on having the map right in front of you, but it would be complicated because one might not, two might not follow one is basically the situation, uh, if that makes sense. So. Any question, I guess, if I always explain that well enough?
So.
Do we just have to keep that in mind for when and if we get a, a special permit application, that we would consider doing that, correct?
Yes, yeah, it's relevant if, and especially if it's not going back before the Conservation Commission as well. Like, because the Conservation Mission, Commission has asked for it if it comes back before them. But if it doesn't, then they don't have the jurisdiction to influence the numbering system of the flags. Yeah, just an FYI at this point.
Could the planning board, I, what the Conservation Commission did was that we developed a policy around this. I suppose the planning board could establish its own policy.
I think we could welcome a suggestion from the CONCOM at some point during the public hearing. Because I, I mean, we could do a policy. I don't know if we it seems like if we're looking to the CONCOM for input on wetlands for any application, that that would just be part of the conversation.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, Michael. Not sure it requires a policy. It just requires us to be aware of what, of what Tess was just saying. For us to ask for it when the special permit comes, you know, when the, when the applicant comes before us.
Yeah. And unfortunately, we have the same clerk as the CONCOM.
And she's great.
I can definitely let you know if, if a notice of intent and comes back and if it doesn't. Yeah. I was requested by the commission to bring that to your attention, but yes, it's more relevant once the project actually comes in.
I'm, I'm hoping we can adjourn soon. Does anybody have anything that really needs to be said now?
I'll move to adjourn.
Who was the second? Thank you.
Jeff Murphy.
A hybrid.
I'll call the roll. Um, Nathan?
Hi.
Linda?
Hi.
Robert?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
And I'm an eye. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deacon, just for the record, you didn't ask me?
I, you weren't on my screen, man.
I would like to keep the meeting going, but I'm outvoted, so.
But you can vote now.
All right.
See ya.
Night, everyone.